Do we have any citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Seeing none, I will go ahead and proceed on to item three. Items for individual consideration, item 3A, consider action to approve meeting minutes from the June 24, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect that it was passed unanimously. Item 3B, consider action to approve the Colony Mud 1C, Section 4, final plat being 14.988 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bang survey abstract number five, located west of FM 969 within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bassdrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. And I need you to know that every time I successfully say statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction, I am so proud of myself.
Well, so I've included both items in here if you want to read the next one too.
Okay, item 3C. Consider action to approve the Colony Mud 1C, Section 5, final plat being 16.930 acres out of the Jose Manuel Bang survey abstract number five, located west of FM 969 within the statutory extraterritorial jurisdiction of Bassdrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A. Ms. Bill.
Thanks. So what we're here tonight to look at is two additional, these are final plats in the colony. You can see on their overall schematic here that they are now, they're gradually working their way west to the existing part of the colony, the original part of the colony that's on the far west side. They're starting to build out the homes in Section 1C, the early sections. So now we're on Section 1C 4 and 1C 5. 1C 4 is to the south and 1C 5 is to the north. They're both alongside of Sam Houston. So 1C 4 is 44 residential lots with two non-residential open space drainage lots. And within that section, there'll be three local streets that connect back to Sam Houston. And in this area, the stormwater drains north back to Sam Houston and then drains west where they're building a regional detention pond in a future phase. So you can see the layout of the lots here. And then it also connects back to Section 1C 2, I believe, to the east as well. So in Colony Mud 1C 5, it has 87 residential lots. It has two non-residential lots. It's on the north side of Sam Houston there and it's got five local streets, I may have one, two, five local streets, I was right, in the development. And this one, the drainage actually goes north because of the way the topography runs and then actually goes back to a pond on the east side of this development. So the recommendation for both of these, they've gone through all the R other processes, they've have the public improvement plans that they're currently building out, they have a public improvement plan agreement that has stipulations on providing fiscal if they want to actually record this plat before they're finished. Otherwise, they have to get all the improvements approved before we will go record the plat. So that process is in place and that's where we're at. Right now, I think with timing, they like to give us the money, go record them, finish them, and then they're able to start addressing and selling lots faster. So, any questions?
Getting the money's always good.
It is.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? We can approve these together in global?
Yeah, just.
I will accept a motion for items 3B and 3C as presented by staff.
Make a motion that we approve items 3B and 3C as explained to us.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect that it was passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go into item four, workshop.
Yeah, so as we discussed back in January, we were going to start bringing a series of different code amendments forward. And so the next one that we're going to workshop tonight is, and Allison's going to take this one, is amendments to, they're called wireless transmission facilities, that's what federal law calls them. And so these are, we're talking about cell phone communication towers. We'd had a conditionally used permit process in our previous code, in this code, we just didn't address them. So now we're going back and addressing them and having you guys give us some feedback on if we, you think we're headed in the right direction.
Good evening, everyone. All right, so wireless transmission facilities, you will see these abbreviated as WTFs. They are facilities that transmit or receive communications. So that can be television, radio, digital, microwave, other similar forms of electronic communications. Typically, that's done through various types of equipment, generically called a facility. And of course, you'll have transmission cables coming to and from those locations. Examples of these are cell phone towers, radio towers, transmitting equipment attached to other structures. And I have examples of all of these for you. All right, so as Jennifer said, the B3 code does not currently address these. So we do need to allow them in some capacity and have some regulations for them. That way, we can maintain appropriate communications throughout the region and meet FCC regulation requirements. So in keeping with the layout of the B3 code, we are going to, we are proposing to regulate these by form. So we have attached wireless transmission facilities. So these are the actual equipment that is attached to a structure. This is not a tower in and of itself. This is the equipment on the structure, okay? So these are some examples, mostly around town, except for the one in the upper right there. But they're, you know, pieces of equipment that may be attached to something. So we have, you know, an antenna on top of the TechStot building, you know, a couple pieces of equipment on top of the fire station is the red building you see there, and then on top of an electric pole for another one. And then the one on the top right is on top of a lattice tower, which is probably what everyone is most familiar with, you know, the giant metal tower that's usually triangular in shape. We also have stealth WTFs. These are facilities, yes, it's kind of funny. These are facilities that are attached to a structure but camouflage, disguised, or screened. So you may see these tucked inside of tall buildings such as clock towers, bell towers, church steeples, things like that. You can also see them tucked into flagpoles. If you're ever passing a flagpole and it just seems really thick, that might be a wireless transmission facility. You can also disguise them as trees. I picked a pine tree for our presentation instead of the ever-popular palm tree along coastal facilities. But you can disguise the whole pole or you can disguise just the facility itself, or both. All right, monopoles, we have a few of these around town. You know, the two on the left there are over off of Old Austin Highway and Joe Grady Tuck. And then we also have one that is adjacent to Pecan Park. It's actually in the ETJ, but it is new and was handy to take a picture of. These are single vertical pole structures that have a facility attached to them and they're external to the pole, so you see them, right? So in the one on the left, you have these little antenna that kind of come out and up, right? The other one is really just kind of some poles that are sticking off the top of the pole. And then you have your more typical, I call them, they look like bars to me, but they're kind of like bar antenna that circle the pole on the one on the right. Now we have self-enclosed monopoles. So these are singular poles, but the facility is inside the pole, so you don't see it. All right, so we have an example of one of those. It's behind the Tractor Supply First National Bank area, in between there and the apartments, the senior apartments that are over there. They're in between those two. So you can see the apartments in the middle picture there in the background and the shopping center from the other angle. And then we have our standard lattice towers. So these are the structures that have vertical and horizontal supports, multiple legs, sometimes they have guy wires, sometimes they don't. And then they have antenna, you know, or other equipment, other facilities attached to them. So we have one over behind Walmart-ish, by the Comfort Suites is the picture on the far right. The storage place over on Industrial Boulevard, one over by TechStot, and one behind DPS are where those pictures are taken of existing ones around town. Do you all have any questions on forms before I go any further? No? Okay, all right. Okay, so these are the proposed facility forms by place type. So this follows our, the B3 code format of regulating which building form is allowed and which place type. Okay, so we have our five different forms there. P1, basically nothing is allowed. If it is blank, you must request a warrant and those are administratively approved on the conditions that they can be justified as geographically sensitive, authentically Bassdrop, or fiscally sustainable. So we left a stealth facility by warrant. P1 is nature. There are really not very many buildings allowed there, if any. I don't think so. You know, and that's, you know, some communities have a lot of river traffic and so they want some better service on the river. It's typically where you see that. So you might see something that's disguised as a boulder along a riverbank. It would be that type of situation. But something you could, once again, review contextually. P2, some of our existing towers are in P2 such as the Bursard Tower, which is one of the main communication facilities in the county over off of Cedar Street. And on that same property is the county's monopole, I don't remember if you guys remember that at all, that recently went in. So this would allow both attached facilities and stealth facilities to be added to existing structures. Okay? And then any structure itself, any type of monopole or lattice tower, would need to request a warrant to be allowed to go into P2. P2 is rural. Yes. Yeah, so that used to be the open space and the very low-density residential districts. P3 and P4, no permitted towers or facilities. And then in P5, not permitting lattice towers, but permitting self-enclosed monopoles so that you don't see those facilities. It's all tucked into one structure. And stealth facilities that are disguised would be permitted. And monopoles and attached facilities where you do see that equipment would be by warrant.
So with the stealth towers, right, we will be able to choose the type that we want? Or would it be based on?
It would.
The contractor, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, they would be able to request something, but it would have to meet those intents, right? You're going to, of being geographically sensitive and authentic Bassdrop. So at that point, you can take into consideration what is surrounding, what is in that area, and what is appropriate. So if you have, if it's an area that's all brick buildings, you know, you could have, maybe say that that would influence that design. Or if you're in an area that is all pine trees, you know, you could help it blend into that environment a little better.
Thank you.
When we talk about authentically Bassdrop, I kind of don't think any of these fit authentically Bassdrop because we're talking about 100 and some years ago and there were no towers like this. When we're talking about limiting, I think we need to be sensitive also to the fact that what I'm hearing more often is that we need better connectivity, we need more input, I mean, we need more ability to log on, to log in, to do whatever. So I want us to be sensitive to that also, since none of these are authentically Bassdrop.
Sure.
Yeah, I definitely concur. And when I read through this, I was questioning why nothing in P3, P4? And I was, well, I have two questions and maybe I'm jumping ahead, but I would like to know what's been the previous practice since they weren't built in. What was the previous practice of someone placing a facility like this in a neighborhood or near businesses for Bassdrop? And then my second question is, if I remember correctly, didn't they used to be able to place them in residential, in like in the back of someone's residential home? And somebody I remember, the company would pay that resident to be able to place it on their property or something to that nature, it seems like was my understanding back in the day when we first started getting wireless. So maybe you can help me remember that. I just want to know what the previous process was.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so typically, you would see them in your industrial areas, your commercial areas, or your extremely rural areas. So that, you know, historically, people have not wanted to look at them. And so they tend to be away from your neighborhood residential areas. That being said, neighborhood residential is where you want the internet nowadays. You know, it used to just be commercial business areas, but now, you know, you need internet and cell service to do homework and work from home. And, you know, all of these new uses that we've, you know, come to explore. And so there is a higher demand for it in residential neighborhoods now. Now this ordinance speaks to facilities that are on private property. Another option that telecom companies use is to put them on public property. So, and that's handled by a different ordinance, but you'll see those as network nodes, sometimes called small cell nodes, or as pole attachments. So for example, Spectrum has some Wi-Fi components on city poles around the high school. And so that is different, that's regulated differently than facilities on private property. Now, you're speaking about is on private property and that might be an arrangement with private homeowners. And that would be something that we could consider. Usually, those are much smaller devices. You know, sometimes they're just a signal booster that cover that one resident, or it could be something larger. So, but we can consider that or we can, you know, consider offering, you know, changing that not permitted, changing one of those to by warrant or allowed, you know, but we'll take that feedback.
I can definitely see why the lattice would not be appropriate on private property, especially in P3 or P4. Maybe some of the smaller ones we could possibly consider?
We could do that.
Or even the ones with the little fake leaves. I've seen those a lot.
Sure, so maybe allowing a stealth facility or a self-enclosed monopole in P3 and P4? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I don't know about the self-enclosed, maybe a stealth one, but I don't know. I mean, I'm not horribly opposed to it, but I just don't know if you might.
Yes, that is a good point. Sometimes these are fairly tall. Lattice towers tend to be the tallest. For example, Bursard Tower is 450 feet tall. Some of the other ones I showed are probably 75 feet tall.
Yeah, that's kind of my position.
75 to 150 feet tall.
Having it in a residential area is just that, you know, you might have a bunch of houses and then a, you know, big stick sticking out the top of it.
I find it very difficult to have this conversation without knowing the nature of how they would place it on public property as well. Like you mentioned, they're around the high school. We've talked a little about flagpoles containing them or maybe like, you know, trees and, you know, the city's got power infrastructure all over the place that seems like it could do double service. And so I find it hard to really kind of figure out how we would use it without knowing exactly how they could use it on public property as well. Is there already a provision in the code for public property use?
Yes.
And just kind of the nature of that and where we actually need it? Because I agree, you know, we need to have to work from home, but, you know, if it's a matter of putting nodes on telephone poles, I don't think anyone really cares, you know? And we could fill P3, P4 up with them as much as we wanted to without too much disruption, but just not knowing much about how else they could place them. Because, I mean, I guess the whole conversation, I guess I wasn't aware that they could place it on public property and kind of thought we were having the same conversation, public and private, right now versus just, I guess, private property, which was the nature of this agenda item. So maybe more information on how they can place it publicly and just have more of a comprehensive approach rather than just, here's your public approach, here's your private approach. But how do we want to face it as a city looking at all of it as kind of community space?
I think that's the next one point. And if there's enough public that could be used, the need for anything on a private property would definitely be decreased. But we can't really talk about it until we really know what the public availability would be.
Right, and they are regulated very differently. And so we do have an ordinance that covers pole attachments and network nodes. And essentially, we'll need to double-check this with the latest round of legislation. But the last time we looked at it, you can not prohibit them from attaching, but you can regulate what they look like. You can have design standards. So the, actually, I'm going to go back to this picture, that picture on the far left, that is actually a network node on a public tower. That's right over here on Pine and Hill. And so that was a network node attachment through that ordinance. And so it regulates color to some extent and how far you can extend off the pole in either directions.
So you're talking about far left, right, in this picture?
Yes, yes.
And it's just the little white piece on top?
And the little bar, the little round thing on the side there.
Down towards the bottom? So it really doesn't change the nature of that utility pole at all? It's, I mean, I look at that and if I were to see that, I would never think cell tower, just think, oh, it's another utility pole because we fail to bury our power downtown.
Usually, those boost signals between the large towers.
I remember when the issue of the tower behind Tractor Supply First National Bank and the nail salon, when that first came up, it was a big deal. I mean, it was not a given that it was going to go in. And now, oh, I don't even see it anymore. You know, just a little pole there.
So I have a question. Is the city doing a study on areas in need of better wireless communication to, so that maybe a plan can be built? If approached for installation of a tower, we would have specific areas where there's a need that would fit into the code or ordinance we're trying to build around?
There are organizations that do that. And I know there's a rural broadband movement going through the state right now. It's become very apparent where areas do not have internet or even cell phone service. And so there is a movement for that. And it would be very tricky for a city to study that within its area because it's not just whether or not you have access, but there are so many providers, you don't know who has access and who doesn't, from each provider and what type. And if it's high-speed versus functional or, you know, and all of that is so variable just based on how that infrastructure works. You know, if you have a lot of people logging on at a peak hour, it's going to be a much slower internet than, you know, if just one person's on it. You know, and that's going to be totally different than if you have ridiculously high-speed fiber internet. And so it would be incredibly challenging for a municipality to study that. But I do know that there are definitely organizations and regional entities and state entities working on expanding, expanding that network. And really, what we can do, what would be most helpful is to adopt ordinances that say, hey, where can you go and how can you get there?
And how often do we get requests?
We have a request, someone that's interested in co-locating on a water tower, they'll be sending their information pretty soon. But I mean, we get, I think Bassdrop Power and Light gets requests for those network nodes fairly frequently. I don't know the exact numbers, but. Oh yeah, and we have a tower going to ZVA since we don't allow them anywhere at their next meeting.
So is there a cost from the city? So say if we need more towers and we put in requests, like do we have to pay a certain thing or is the company pay to come set up 50 towers around town? Like how does that work?
So this would be just like any other development process. You know, so you would have your ordinance specifying where you can go, you'd pick your property, you'd do a site plan, you know, you'd make sure that that property is, well, let me back up, you'd go make sure it's plotted and properly subdivided or exempt from plating. You'd go through your site development process. You'd check, you know, access, you know, is, usually the base of these are screened and locked down for access security control. What does that screening look like and building permit to actually go install?
What's EC?
Employment Center.
Employment Center.
Yes, so that is, that used to be the industrial park and business park zoning and the old zoning code. Yeah, they were all allowed. Yeah.
It looks to me like y'all, I'm happy with this. It looks to me like y'all did all the research and made it pretty logical, you know, for the most part, limit it in the residential area and allow it everywhere else.
And just to speak kind of to the previous code, so in our old code, we definitely had restrictions on it in certain zoning districts, but even in our industrial park districts, when you got over 150 feet in height, you had to do additional, or it was 100 feet in height, you had to have additional setbacks or you had to go through planning and zoning and go to city council twice to get that permit process. So with the way I think we're proposing to lay this out, this will actually be a simpler process for cell providers to go through than our previous process was. Because again, we're talking, some of these facilities are 410 feet tall, you know, we've got, you know, fall zone concerns and, you know, those kind of things we've got to look at. But it'll be able to be administratively reviewed and approved as per our previous steps that I think pretty much everyone that we've ever taken through had to come through the conditional use permit process in the past because almost all of them are over the height limits. So just kind of some background that that tower, why you got to hear about it so much behind Tractor Supply was because we had to notify all the neighbors and invite them to a meeting to talk about it. In this case, we won't be doing that.
Anything else, commissioners? So I think you've done a good job. You take our comments and appreciate your work.
Absolutely, yeah. So we will work on that. We will draft an ordinance that lays out some of these things very clearly and specifically. We will give that to legal to review, make sure we're in compliance with all the FCC guidelines and regulations and all the latest state legislation, and then we will bring it back to you guys.
Thank you. Item number five, updates. 5A, update on recent city council actions regarding planning department items.
Yes, so we've been busy. So the last meeting at city council, we actually took, it was the, I guess not the last meeting, meeting before last, we took the Veridian Development Agreement to City Council for Approval, which did approve, did get. to city council for approval, which did approve, did get approved by resolution at that meeting. They listened to the feedback from P&amp;Z and then the residents. And I, so the next step in that process is, it's also a public improvement district. So their next step is actually, the next meeting, assuming we get all the comments returned, is to take forward their PID financing agreement. That's the next step in their PID process for the Veridian. And then they'll go start going through the development process. First, really, to extend utilities. That's the, what drives the development, is getting the utilities there first, so they then can build houses. So Veridian's underway. And then the other one that even went before that was the, we're calling Bash Drop 552. Now that they've closed on the property, they're going with the name Colorado Bend, or Bash Drop Colorado Bend is, I believe, the name they're going with right now. And that would be the movie studio that we had a lot of discussion on at P&amp;Z and city council. The next steps for that developer is to, as we discussed, was to ask for any, if there's any economic development incentives for the development types and business they're going to bring to town, and then to request annexation. And so that's the next thing that would come to the planning department, is that request for annexation. When we get that request for annexation, it'll also be accompanied by rezoning requests, which is, in our new application process, is called a zoning concept scheme. At that point, we'll also then come back with the comprehensive plan amendments for the future land use and the transportation network, because those will need to be in place before we approve the zoning. So kind of the sequence of events, we annexation request, comprehensive plan amendments, and then zoning. And in that, council also requested to see their public frontage plan, which is usually the step that comes in when we do their subdivision improvements. And that's looking at, the public frontage plan is something that comes in with the road, and those are the sidewalk, street trees, streetlights, how their public frontage interacts with our, or our public frontage interacts with their private frontage, is what that public frontage plan looks like. So that's going to come in with the rezoning request for review by y'all and city council. But that's the next steps. So they haven't turned any of those in yet, so we're still kind of just working out the details of them when they're going to turn their next application in.
And could you clarify for me? I think that the city will also be annexing part of the river?
Yes, that was...
But doesn't mean that the city's going to own the river?
No.
Could you expound on that, please?
So in annexation law, actually, it specifically gives the city the ability to annex its navigable streams, is what it says. And so, just like the river that's within the city limits, this would become part of the city limits, but we still would not own the river. It would be under the same management and authority. People still have access to it, can float down it. The city, that wouldn't change. So the city, it wouldn't functionally change anything for people utilizing the river in that area. So part of their annexation will include connecting it across the river to the existing city limits at Pecan Park, so...
Two things, that, kind of like we annexed a stream bed, but we don't annex the stream itself?
Yeah.
Before you could float on it, and you're always...
We annex the geographic boundary, yes.
And then, as far as the, I guess, the Colorado River bend, is that what they're calling it, 552? Typically, when someone kind of develops, there's a dedication of a certain amount of land to public usage, maybe for fire stations or parks or things like that. What is the anticipated dedication of this development?
The development agreement didn't contemplate any, didn't require any specific dedications in the development agreement. So it would follow in the zoning concept scheme.
So they wouldn't be required to give any land, other than, say, road, sidewalk, to public space?
Yes, and they've also, they've already dedicated some additional easements in some area to the county to help with some drainage issues the county's been experiencing, so they can go in and do a project adjacent to Lover's Lane. So they've been, so specifically to the city, there's no property that's anticipated to be dedicated, other than the right-of-way for the road.
Some of the property in the floodplain?
Yes, so that'll be subject to all of our floodplain regulations.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that? As much as you want to update?
And then we've got, that's the only projects I've got updates on today. Then I've got our monthly volume report. I think Viviana gave you, or Nicole gave you a copy of that.
I meant to bring my report from last month. How does this compare with last month?
We are pretty much steady with last month. We've, so did have a pretty big surge of new single-family permits in March. That was kind of our big influx, March and April. And now, we're kind of just seeing that steady, what are we at? I've got to get the actual number. We have 46, which is still a lot for Bash Drop, where we were doing about 100 a year prior. So it's still a lot, but it's slowed down a little bit. What we're really seeing is an increase in inspection requests, because those, all of those permits that came in in March that have been approved are now under construction, trying to get sold. So there's a lot, a lot more inspections going on, which we utilize a third-party service for, so they're able to scale up and scale down. So if they, there's a lot of inspections per day, they're able to send out four inspectors to get all of that done, versus if we just have one on staff that tries to do all of them. So that's, so we're definitely very busy. And then just, in general, have a lot of meetings also to talk about future development. As you've seen, we've had two development agreements get approved fairly recently. People are still looking at property in the area, a lot of interest. So we're kind of in the early phases of people just kind of, we like to call it kicking the tires, seeing what's out, what they can do, what property is out there. So a lot of meetings on that, on the planning side.
Any other questions? 5C, individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners that particular items be listed on future agendas. Does anybody have anything that they would want to see discussed at the next meeting? All right, hearing none, we will move on to item six.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
On favor? Let's get out of here. Thank you very much, staff. Appreciate, appreciate all of you commissioners.